Good afternoon, and thank you for viewing the December 10th special meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. We want to encourage everyone to keep up the efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19 in Arcata. We know that wearing masks and practicing social distancing, we can flatten the curve and keep our businesses open. Please support safe shopping by masking up in Arcata. If you wish to make public comment during the meeting, either for any of the items on the agenda, there are two ways to do this. If you were logged on to the Zoom meeting webinar, click on the Raise Your Hand on the right-hand side of the screen. When it's time for public comment on the item that you wish to speak on, the clerk will unmute you. You'll have two minutes to comment. Two, you can access the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen, enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Press star nine on your phone. This will raise your hand. But it's time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak. The clerk will unmute your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted. You'll have two minutes to comment. If you would like, please rise and join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Winkler?
Here.
Vice Mayor Patino?
Here.
Councilmember Pereira?
Here.
Councilmember?
You heard me? There.
All present.
All right, any staff reports?
Yeah, Mayor and Vice Mayor, I did just want to take a minute, really just to recognize the two of you long-serving council members. We'll start, I guess, with Mayor Winkler. Been on the council since 2008, serving as mayor in 2012, 15, and closing out the pandemic year 2020 as mayor. Prior to that, you know, serving on our energy committee for two years and then eight years on the planning commission for a total of 22 years of service to the city of Arcata, to Arcata community, and really to the Humboldt County region on so many regional boards and leadership in the energy industry. On a personal level, I guess, you know, Michael and I first worked together on the excessive electricity use tax, which was passed by the voters in 2012 by 68%. Quickly, just kind of ratcheting down the housing crisis that we were experiencing as a result of full residential homes being turned into growing facilities in Arcata. But since that time, Michael really has taught me just a great deal, mostly about electrical conversions, alternative technologies, wholesale energy pricing, feed and tariff programs, lots of details. But also really the history, his passion on wars, the cost to the humanity, the environment and the economy of that industry. He has kept Arcata really on the state and the national map as a leader in energy planning and climate policy. He's been a champion for local neighborhoods. Single-handedly has probably removed more graffiti than anyone ever in the history of Arcata. It's been supportive of me professionally and personally, and his insights and his wisdom really will be missed. And Vice Mayor Patino has served on the Arcata community and council since 19, well, has been serving Arcata community since 1997, starting with seven years on the Transportation Safety Committee, and then to the council in two different stints for a total of over 17 years of service to this community. I think Paul will forever be remembered around this halls of City Hall, somewhat for his fruit and candy drops, for stepping in when he knows that we're really under pressure and just needed a little bit of a release and a laugh. His unwavering willingness to dig into issues on behalf of his constituents and to keep us informed on changes in statewide policies and laws. He's worked side by side with us as a champion for alternative transportation, for bike lanes, for walkable spaces, for affordable housing, and support for those experiencing homelessness. He's been a staunch supporter of our student population coming and enjoying Humboldt State University. Paul's guidance has brought services such as our mobile intervention services team, clinicians working side by side with our police department. He was instrumental this year in bringing local showers for those experiencing homelessness and for the downtown restroom, our smoking ordinances, rent stabilization. And everyone on staff knows that Paul has a really keen eye for a faded red curb in town and often lets us know, keeps us up to date. Paul's been a huge support for me over the years and somebody that I could always count on in a pinch to dig in and help. Both of these council members truly are one of a kind. They have served with passion and a love for Arcata that will be felt for generations. And on behalf of the city and our employees association, we'll be delivering a couple of things to your home. But I just wanted to point out the first of them, and I'll just hold one up. We do have really beautiful commemorative plaques that capture your service on the Arcata City Council that are made locally by our wood labs on South G Street. So for Paul's, it reads elected official recognition of service awarded to Paul Patino, council member 2004 to 2008, 2014 to 2020. And then Michael, similarly, recognizing your service on the council from 2008 to 2020. So we will be delivering those along with a couple of other little things, probably tomorrow to you. But I just personally, professionally, and on behalf of the city, want to thank both of you for just your unwavering service and commitment to the community. And then just open it up. I don't know if we have public comments, if there were others in the public that wanted to say a few words. Please go ahead and raise your hand or press your star nine on your phone if there are any other public comments around this item.
So again, a reminder for attendees, if you would like to do public comment at this point, please use the Raise Your Hand on your screen or if you're on the phone, press star nine. We do not have any public comment.
All right. We do. We do have some comments, though.
All right. I can't not say publicly what an honor it's been to work with both of you on the city council as well as on the various JPA boards that we've had a chance to work together on with some of your true pet interests and projects that mean so much to you, energy and transportation. And, you know, it's just been an honor and a privilege. You have each, both of you provided so much dedication to the community and commitment of time. And you've been on, you know, as Karen said as well, on a personal note, it's it's just been a pleasure to work with you, and I look forward to seeing you, working with you in the future, interacting with you. You know, I feel that in addition, we are also good friends, and I look forward to continuing that relationship. So thank you both very much. Thank you.
And Mark, go ahead.
Yes. Michael and Paul, thank you so much for all that you've done for the community. It's been really an honor and a privilege to work with you all these years. And I hope that we can continue on some level to collaborate and work, you know, for the benefit of Arcata. But really, really thank you for all you've done, all your hard work. All the night meetings, all the study sessions and special, special meetings and difficult, sometimes budget negotiations, but just really, really appreciate the dedication that you brought to the offices. Thank you.
Thank you, Ma.
Great. Thanks.
Okay.
I'd like to, unless there's another person that wants to chime in, I just wanted to say, you know, Michael, Paul, getting to work with you for the past six years has really been an honor. Both of you have been fierce advocates for really important issues in our community. I think Karen did a fabulous overview, a deep dive into many of the legislative accomplishments that are part of your legacy. Michael, community choice energy, when I first came on the council, that was not something that we had in this community yet, and you were a fierce advocate for it, really relentless in making sure that it was on the forefront of this, of our council's minds. And now it's so normal in our community to have community choice energy, and it would not have happened if it wasn't for your dedication to moving that across the finish line. So I really want to thank you for your efforts on issues like that. And I know with the electrification ordinance, that that's also going to be, whatever we end up passing, that is absolutely going to be because of your work to get that across the finish line. So I want to really recognize you for that. And Paul, just really been a privilege to work with you on housing issues, homeless issue, homelessness issues, rent stabilization. That was not a popular thing when it was first proposed to our council, and you got out in front of the issue and really had moral clarity on us being a leader on that issue. And just really appreciate all the work you've done around housing and affordable housing in our community. Really going to miss having both of your institutional knowledge and leadership on these key issues. But your legacy will continue to be a part of the work that we have ahead of us. So thank you and wishing you all all well on your future endeavors.
Thank you.
It's definitely been a privilege to get to know you both. I've enjoyed getting to know you over the years, and I feel like we've become friends, and I'm very grateful for that. And, you know, I'm confident that we'll still be working on things in the future. So thank you very much.
And Jen, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it's been great working with both of you. And Paul, I'm really going to miss seeing you at City Hall when City Hall's back opening. Yeah, so I hope that you'll still stop in and say hi to us. I know you've really been one of the people that I've worked with the most as far as the affordable housing side. And I just, I really appreciated all the thoughtfulness that you've brought to some of the projects that we've had going forward. And I just wanted to thank you both. It's going to be sad not to see you guys around, but hopefully we'll still get to see you around. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
David, are you preemptively unmuting? Although I still can't hear you. Really faint.
How about now?
Perfect.
Okay, sorry for the technical difficulties. I just wanted to echo what my colleagues and your council members have said. I won't reiterate the list of accomplishments, but just for my part, it's been an honor working with both of you. Your dedication and services to this community is laudable, and I, you know, really appreciate the professional and personal relationships that we've developed. I feel like both of you have pushed me and others around me to grow. And in particular, in, you know, city council meetings and the way that we bring information and projects forward, whether they were initiated by you or not. I just think that, you know, you've done a great service to the community to help us expand our ability to deliver services to this community. So I wanted to thank you both for that and, you know, looking forward to working with each of you in your future capacities. And thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, I'll be real brief, Mayor and Vice Mayor. You made us a much better police department because you paid attention to the details. And sometimes, you know, the details are lost and some of the chaos that we are challenged with on occasion. So thank you for that. And I also want to say that you also supported law enforcement in addition to the entire city council and our city manager when it was difficult for elected officials to support law enforcement. And I just wanted to say thank you for that. Enjoy retirement.
All right, I believe that concludes our staff public comments.
Paul, is there anything that you want to say?
You know, I guess I have a lot to say, but I'd like this to be a real short meeting. I love everybody. I'm looking forward to staying in town.
Well, I wanted to thank everybody who spoke for their very kind words.
And I've had enough.
I'm sorry I interrupted you. Go ahead.
My internet keeps cutting in and out, so, anyway, thanks for everything. I'm out of here. Go ahead, Michael.
Right, but as I said, I want to thank everyone who spoke for the very kind words. Things in the city council, especially in the last four years, have been very heated. And it may not always have been clear, but I recognize the passion and especially in the areas where I and other members of the council have differed. Those have been very difficult, that I've tried to look to my conscience and also my ethics of how to treat other people fairly. And maybe I haven't always done that, but it's something that I always strive for. And I also want to thank the citizens of Arcata for electing me to the city council for the last 12 years. It's been a great honor, and I've always tried to recognize that, you know, the citizens of Arcata and all the residents of Arcata are the people who I'm really responsible to. And then I really, in any action that I take, these, you know, these are the people who I really answer to and who I really, you know, I have to answer to them. And I also have to answer to my own conscience and to whatever divine inspiration I have to do the right thing and to be of service. So next is new business adopt resolution number 201-27, declaring the results of the municipal election held on November 3rd, 2020. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Thank you. And council. The city of Arcata declared or held a general municipal election on November 3rd. Pursuant to government code section 15301, the Humboldt County Registrar of Voters has completed the canvas of this election. City council must now declare the canvas to be the official results of this election for the city of Arcata and certify that Stacy Atkins Salazar, Emily Grace Goldstein, and Sarah Schaefer are duly elected to the city council with terms expiring December 2024. And Measure A, Open Space Parks and Trails Special Tax, and Measure B regarding Article 34 limitations on government-funded affordable housing were both approved. It is recommended the council at this time adopt resolution number 20127.
All right, I would entertain a motion from council.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt that resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any initial comments by members of the council, starting with Vice Mayor Patino? Councilmember Watson?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm looking forward to working with the three new council members, and congratulations to them.
Councilmember Pereira?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
I have nothing to add. Do we have any members of the public who have indicated that they want to comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
All right, and next I will do a vote by roll call, starting with Councilmember Pereira.
Aye.
Councilmember Watson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patino?
I think we might have lost him.
Paul, go ahead and vote.
Okay, aye. My internet keeps going in and out. I just try to operate in between it. Thank you.
And I vote aye, and congratulations to the three new council members. And, right, great. Yes, next we have item B, city clerk to swear newly elected members of the Arcata City Council pursuant to California Elections Code, Section 10265.
All right, so folks on the hold with us, we are going to actually be moving this Zoom meeting live to the front lawn of City Hall. So it'll just take us probably three or four minutes to get set up out there, in which case we will resume this meeting for the swearing in.
No, I'm not saying anything.
So Michael and Paul, you are both free to drop out of the meeting at this point.
I say thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks to you and all the staff, Sophia and Brett. Bye-bye.
Actually, at an active live meeting, so what I'd like to do is get our candidates elected up. We're going to state you six feet apart here, one starting on the edge of this carpet, and then working our way towards the building. The Viking is Sarah Schaefer, Emily Grace Goldstein, and Stacy Atkins Salazar. And I will turn this over to our sitting clerk, Richard Dory, who will lead you in the oath of office. Awesome. Okay, so the oath starts by you saying aye and then stating your name. So let's do that one at a time, starting with Emily and working our way down.
Hi, Emily Goldstein. Too eager.
Okay, so raise your right hand and state your name.
Hi, Emily Goldstein.
Hi, Stacy Atkins Salazar. Hi, Sarah Schaefer. And then repeat the rest after me. You solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any substantial preparation or purpose of occasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations. Now, if you could, one at a time, step over here to the table. I'll have you sign your oath of office. No rain, but a little wind. Okay, this will be for you. Perfect. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we have a few minutes. We actually have our other council members will be here, so we can do a full pushlight with the photo of our new city council. And then you should be back at the Zoom meeting right about 1:00 o'clock to finish this meeting live on Zoom.
All right, council member prayer whenever you are ready, we are back live.
Okay, wonderful. Well, welcome back to the Arcata City Council meeting. I would like to welcome our newly sworn in council members Emily Grace Goldstein, Stacy Atkins Salazar and Sarah Schaefer. Round of applause. Welcome aboard. So our next order of business is item D, elect a mayor and vice mayor pursuant to Arcata Municipal Code Section 2020. So in 2018, the city council adopted a process for considering the mayor and vice mayor position by rotation. This process is based on the length of time a council member has served since last being elected mayor and if needed, the total vote count of his or her last election. Because the previously seated vice mayor will not be rotating to the mayor position, we are now in a position to nominate a new mayor and vice mayor. And I will now ask for questions or nominations from the council for the position of mayor.
So I would move to nominate council member prayer as mayor. I believe that's the interpretation of the rotation. Council member prayer would be next in line, and I think she did an outstanding job in her previous term as mayor, and that's how I feel about it.
Okay, well, we have the nomination. Do we need a second for that nomination?
I second that nomination.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't trying to like force someone to say that. I just wanted to clarify. Okay, we have a second on the nomination. Are there any comments from the council? If not, we'll go to the public comment. Any comments from council? Just wave your hand. Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. So I will call the vote by roll call. Council member Watson.
Aye.
Council member Goldstein.
Aye.
Council member Atkins Salazar.
Aye.
Council member Schaefer.
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you. Motion passes.
Yes.
Mayor-elect, how do we record your vote on this item?
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't need my vote, but thank you. Okay, so the protocol manual process suggests that the mayor then nominates the vice mayor. And I did want to say a few things about this because I do feel like we've been kind of presented with a conundrum on this because our protocol, as you probably read, is pretty prescriptive. It's very detailed. And yet, it doesn't seem like it accounts for the reality that we're faced with today where we have three brand-new council members, all who are now in the rotation process. However, given what staff had outlined based on our protocol, it shows Councilor Watson, who served our city amazingly as mayor a couple of years ago, shows him next in line. However, the conundrum I'm bringing to the council is purely that going with what has been outlined in our protocol manual would mean that it would be at the expense of one of my new colleagues. That one of the new council members would not have the opportunity to serve as mayor during their four-year term if we go strictly by what is written in our protocol. And I did consult with council member Patino about this, who was really the architect and had the vision behind this rotation to get his insight. And he did feel that nominating a new council member would help honor that spirit of the rotation. So I'm bringing this conundrum to you all. In terms of the council member that was newly elected, that fits under the vote count, that would be Stacy Atkins Salazar. So I'm going to make a nomination for Stacy Atkins Salazar to serve as our vice mayor, but I want to open the floor to the council on this just because it felt like our protocol is very prescriptive and yet did not address this particular situation. And I didn't want us to rush over that and then realize a couple of years down the road that one of our newer council members didn't get an opportunity to serve as mayor during their four years on the council. So that's what I'm putting out there for any discussion or comments.
Yeah, I'd very much like to stick with the protocol. I'd very much like to serve as vice mayor and understand the conundrum. I do feel like that was acknowledged when we did originally talk about this in 2018. Spent some time working on it as well. I'm coming up with some of the stuff. And, you know, yeah, I would like to stick with the protocol manual.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the council?
Well, I am totally fine with that, but in the end, it won't really affect me because I would be in the rotation next year to be the vice mayor anyways, based on the vote count if we do it this way. So it's fine with me, but I don't know how our other council members feel.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would like to say because I am the one that would be affected by it as the lowest of the three vote receivers. Though I am one that enjoys, you know, keeping with a system that has worked. And if Brett is passionate about serving as vice mayor, I support that and realize that, you know, it might be in a time theoretically in the future if, you know, I get elected, re-elected, then serving as mayor. And being that case, you know, it's not the number-one passion of my heart to serve as the mayor. I am happy of serving as a member of the council. And, you know, that's what I ran for, and I'm excited to do that. So, yeah.
If that's something that council member Schaefer is comfortable with, then I'm comfortable sticking with the protocol as well.
Okay, perfect. Well, then I will rescind the nomination. Thank you for talking this through. I just really didn't want it to be a couple of years from now going, oh, shoot, we didn't talk about it. And I wanted it to be an informed decision. So I will happily nominate Brett Watson to serve as our vice mayor for this upcoming year.
And I will second that.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will go to a vote by roll call. Actually, sorry, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. So I will call the vote by roll call. Council member Watson.
Aye.
Council member Goldstein.
Aye.
Council member Atkins Salazar.
Aye.
Council member Schaefer.
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you. Motion passes.
Yes. Mayor-elect, how do we record your vote on this item?
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't need my vote, but thank you. Okay, so the protocol manual process suggests that the mayor then nominates the vice mayor. And I did want to say a few things about this because I do feel like we've been kind of presented with a conundrum on this because our protocol, as you probably read, is pretty prescriptive. It's very detailed. And yet, it doesn't seem like it accounts for the reality that we're faced with today where we have three brand-new council members, all who are now in the rotation process. However, given what staff had outlined based on our protocol, it shows Councilor Watson, who served our city amazingly as mayor a couple of years ago, shows him next in line. However, the conundrum I'm bringing to the council is purely that going with what has been outlined in our protocol manual would mean that it would be at the expense of one of my new colleagues. That one of the new council members would not have the opportunity to serve as mayor during their four-year term if we go strictly by what is written in our protocol. And I did consult with council member Patino about this, who was really the architect and had the vision behind this rotation to get his insight. And he did feel that nominating a new council member would help honor that spirit of the rotation. So I'm bringing this conundrum to you all. In terms of the council member that was newly elected, that fits under the vote count, that would be Stacy Atkins Salazar. So I'm going to make a nomination for Stacy Atkins Salazar to serve as our vice mayor, but I want to open the floor to the council on this just because it felt like our protocol is very prescriptive and yet did not address this particular situation. And I didn't want us to rush over that and then realize a couple of years down the road that one of our newer council members didn't get an opportunity to serve as mayor during their four years on the council. So that's what I'm putting out there for any discussion or comments.
Yeah, I'd very much like to stick with the protocol. I'd very much like to serve as vice mayor and understand the conundrum. I do feel like that was acknowledged when we did originally talk about this in 2018. Spent some time working on it as well. I'm coming up with some of the stuff. And, you know, yeah, I would like to stick with the protocol manual.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the council?
Well, I am totally fine with that, but in the end, it won't really affect me because I would be in the rotation next year to be the vice mayor anyways, based on the vote count if we do it this way. So it's fine with me, but I don't know how our other council members feel.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would like to say because I am the one that would be affected by it as the lowest of the three vote receivers. Though I am one that enjoys, you know, keeping with a system that has worked. And if Brett is passionate about serving as vice mayor, I support that and realize that, you know, it might be in a time theoretically in the future if, you know, I get elected, re-elected, then serving as mayor. And being that case, you know, it's not the number-one passion of my heart to serve as the mayor. I am happy of serving as a member of the council. And, you know, that's what I ran for, and I'm excited to do that. So, yeah.
If that's something that council member Schaefer is comfortable with, then I'm comfortable sticking with the protocol as well.
Okay, perfect. Well, then I will rescind the nomination. Thank you for talking this through. I just really didn't want it to be a couple of years from now going, oh, shoot, we didn't talk about it. And I wanted it to be an informed decision. So I will happily nominate Brett Watson to serve as our vice mayor for this upcoming year.
And I will second that.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will go to a vote by roll call. Actually, sorry, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll do a call. Call the vote by roll call. Council member Watson.
Aye.
Council member Goldstein.
Aye.
Council member Atkins Salazar.
Aye.
Council member Schaefer.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you and congratulations, Vice Mayor Watson.
Thanks. Thank you very much to all the council members. I really appreciate you giving me the opportunity.
Okay, wonderful. So next, we will move on to item E. Consider council member assignments to regional boards, committees, and commissions and as liaisons for 2021. So we all have a matrix of options and council member preferences before us. So we will try our best to assign a primary and alternate for each of these groups. So the first position on the list is Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District Water Quality Task Force. So we can go down from the top, but I will say in reviewing this in advance, I'm sure you all saw as well that there are some that multiple, many of you showed strong interest in. So I think we'll start to just go down the list, but if we do need to kind of jump a little bit to maybe see the ones that are really, you know, have a lot of interest, how we're going to sort that out and how that affects the other appointments, we can do that as well. So let's go down with Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, the Water Quality Task Force. So for that, I have myself and Vice Mayor Watson having an interest in that, myself having it as a one choice and third for Watson. So should we just go with primary alternate on?
Yeah, that's a group that I think I'm currently on and I don't think I've ever actually met.
Okay. Okay, so we will.
I'm fine if you'd like to take it.
Okay, perfect. Let's see. And then after this, we'll review it one final time and make sure everyone's on the same page. So next, we have Humboldt County Association of Governments. Council member Atkins Salazar expressed a strong interest in that. And it seems like you could be the primary, but we would need an alternate. So this is one that meets monthly at 4:00 p.m. on the third Thursday. This is focused on transportation. So I don't know if there's another member of the council that would be interested in serving as an alternate for that body.
Just for the benefit of our new council members, so the alternate would just attend meetings if the primary could not make it. You don't need to attend as an alternate on a regular basis. We do our best to try to help our JPAs and local agencies meet their quorum. But in fact, if you are an alternate and you absolutely can't make a meeting that the primary can't make as well, then they just need to make sure they have a quorum. So this is background.
I will be the alternate.
Great, thank you, council member Goldstein. I'll make a note. Okay, let's see. Next, we have Humboldt Del Norte Hazardous Materials Response JPA. We have Vice Mayor Watson having it as a second choice, third choice for myself. Would you like to be the primary and I'll serve as alternate?
Sounds good to me. Who, I'm sorry, who is the alternate again for HCOG?
Council member Goldstein.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Next, we have Humboldt Transit Authority. Let's see, we have, this was a fourth priority for council member Goldstein, fifth for council member Schaefer. Let's see.
Can I comment on that too? Because I was very interested in serving on HTA. However, the meeting time is like the only one on the list that is supremely inconvenient for me. So I was just hoping that there might be somebody that might, you know, be able to put more time towards.
You didn't need my vote, but. Thank you. Okay. So the protocol manual process suggests that the mayor then nominates the vice mayor. And I did want to say a few things about this because I do feel like we've been kind of presented with a conundrum on this because our protocol, as you probably read, is pretty prescriptive. It's very detailed. And yet, it doesn't seem like it accounts for the reality that we're faced with today where we have three brand-new councilmembers, all who are now in the rotation process. However, given what staff had outlined based on our protocol, it shows Councilmember Watson, who served our city amazingly as mayor a couple of years ago, shows him next in line. However, the conundrum I'm bringing to the council is purely that going with what has been outlined in our protocol manual would mean that it would be at the expense of one of my new colleagues. One of the new councilmembers would not have the opportunity to serve as mayor during their four-year term if we go strictly by what is written in our protocol. And I did consult with Councilmember Patino about this, who was really the architect and had the vision behind this rotation to get his insight. And he did feel that nominating a new councilmember would help honor that spirit of the rotation. So I'm bringing this conundrum to you all. In terms of the councilmember that was newly elected that fits under the vote count, that would be Stacy Atkins Salazar. So I'm going to make a nomination for Stacy Atkins Salazar to serve as our vice mayor. But I want to open the floor to the council on this just because it felt like our protocol is very prescriptive and yet did not address this particular situation. And I didn't want us to rush over that and then realize a couple of years down the road that one of our newer councilmembers didn't get an opportunity to serve as mayor during their four years on the council. So that's what I'm putting out there for any discussion or comments.
Yeah, I'd very much like to stick with the protocol. I'd very much like to serve as vice mayor and understand the conundrum. I do feel like that was acknowledged when we did originally talk about this in 2018. Spent some time working on it as well. I'm coming up with some of the stuff and you know, yeah, I would like to stick with the protocol manual.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the council?
Well, I'm totally fine with that, but in the end, it won't really affect me because I would be in the rotation next year to be the vice mayor anyways, based on the vote count if we do it this way. So it's fine with me, but I don't know how our other councilmembers feel.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would like to say, because I am the one that would be affected by it as the lowest of the three vote receivers. Though, I am one that enjoys, you know, keeping with a system that has worked. And if Brett is passionate about serving as vice mayor, I support that. And realize that, you know, it might be in a time theoretically in the future if, you know, I get elected, re-elected, then serving as mayor. And being that case, you know, it's not the number-one passion of my heart to serve as the mayor. I am happy of serving as a member of the council. And, you know, that's what I ran for and I'm excited to do that. So. Yeah.
If that's something that Councilmember Schaefer is comfortable with, then I'm comfortable sticking with the protocol as well.
Okay, perfect. Well, then I will rescind the nomination. Thank you for talking this through. I just really didn't want it to be a couple of years from now going, oh, shoot! We didn't, we didn't talk about it. And I wanted it to be an informed decision. So I will happily nominate Brett Watson to serve as our vice mayor for this upcoming year.
And I will second that.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will go to a vote by roll call. Actually, sorry, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll do a call, call the vote by roll call. Councilmember Watson.
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you and congratulations, Vice Mayor Watson.
Thanks. Thank you very much to all the councilmembers. I really appreciate you giving me the opportunity.
Okay, wonderful. So next, we will move on to item E. Consider councilmember assignments to regional boards, committees, and commissions, and as liaisons for 2021. So we all have a matrix of options and councilmember preferences before us. So we will try our best to assign a primary and alternate for each of these groups. So the first position on the list is Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District Water Quality Task Force. So we can go down from the top. But I will say, in reviewing this in advance, I'm sure you all saw as well that there's some that multiple many of you showed strong interest in. So I think we'll start to just go down the list. But if we do need to kind of jump a little bit to maybe see the ones that are really, you know, have a lot of interest, how we're going to sort that out and how that affects the other appointments, we can do that as well. So we'll, let's go down with Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, the Water Quality Task Force. So for that, I have myself and Vice Mayor Watson having an interest in that. Myself having it as a one choice and third for Watson. So should we just go with primary alternate on?
Um, yeah, that's a group that I think I'm currently on and I don't think has ever actually met.
Okay. Okay, so we will.
I'm fine if you'd like to take it.
Okay, perfect. Let's see. And then after this, we'll review it one final time and make sure everyone's on the same page. So next, we have Humboldt County Association of Governments. Councilmember Atkins Salazar expressed a strong interest in that. And it seems like you could be the primary, but we would need an alternate. So this is one that meets monthly at 4:00 PM on the third Thursday. This is focused on transportation. So I don't know if there's another member of the council that would be interested in serving as an alternate for that body.
Just for the benefit of our new councilmembers, so the alternate would just attend meetings if the primary could not make it. You don't need to attend as an alternate on a regular basis. We do our best to try to help our JPAs and local agencies meet their quorum. But in fact, if you are an alternate and you absolutely can't make a meeting that the primary can't make as well, then they just need to make sure they have a quorum. So. This is background.
I will be the alternate.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Goldstein. I'll make a note. Okay. Let's see. Next, we have the Humboldt Del Norte Hazardous Materials Response JPA. We have Vice Mayor Watson having it as a second choice, third choice for myself. Would you like to be the primary and I'll serve as alternate?
Sounds good to me. I'm sorry, who is the alternate again for HCOG?
Uh, Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Next, we have Humboldt Transit Authority. Let's see, we have this was a fourth priority for Councilmember Goldstein, fifth for Councilmember Schaefer. Let's see.
Can I comment on that too? Because I was very interested in serving on HTA. However, the meeting time is like the only one on the list that is supremely inconvenient for me. So I was just hoping that there might be somebody that might, you know, be able to put more time towards that. But if there isn't anybody that is able to do that, I mean, I just don't know what the situation is because I, on a regular basis, probably could not make that meeting. So I just wanted to add that comment, but. Yeah, so.
No, thank you for that clarification. I mean, that, that makes a lot of sense that serving as an alternate would be challenging if you can't make the meetings due to other conflicts. So I'm wondering with this one, given that there's some other higher priority appointments that have been outlined by both Councilmember Goldstein and Councilmember Schaefer, if we can just return to this one after we see how the other ones fall. Okay. Okay, great. So next, we have Humboldt Waste Management Authority. And so, let's see, the highest rating was myself putting it as a second choice. And then both councilmembers, Goldstein and Schaefer have it as a third choice. And Councilmember Atkins Salazar has the fourth choice and fifth choice for Vice Mayor Watson. Is there a strong preference between councilmember? I mean, I'm happy to serve as the primary again. If there's a strong preference between those that had it as a middle-of-the-road choice, or would you like to, again, wait? We could sort out the alternate after some other appointments, if that's helpful.
I don't have a strong preference for taking on this role. I'm happy to. But if Councilmember Schaefer would like to be the alternate, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, looking at the lists and what, I think I would be happy to take the alternate position on that. If, okay, Councilmember Goldstein is okay with that, then yes, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, great. Well, I'm biased. I think it's really interesting work, so. Nerd out on trash. Okay, so next, we have the Humboldt County Indian Gaming Local Community Benefit Committee. This meets on the call of the chair. With this one, it's, you know, a fourth or fifth choice for most of the council. Again, is this one that we want to just come back to, or do folks have a strong preference?
I'm happy to be the primary on it.
Okay. And does anyone want to be the alternate for that one?
I'll be the alternate.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have League of California Cities, Redwood Empire Division. So let's see, we have both councilmembers Atkins Salazar and Goldstein that have identified it as a second choice, and Councilmember Schaefer as a fourth choice. So, given it's one of the top choices for councilmembers Atkins Salazar and Goldstein, do you have any comments or preference?
Well, I'm already a primary on one of my top choices, though I think that it should go to the other, to Councilmember Goldstein if she's interested in that. And I could be the alternate or someone else could.
I'd be very, I would love that. Thank you, if everyone else is comfortable with that.
That sounds good. And then in terms of alternate, Councilmember Atkins Salazar, you'd like to be the alternate?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. This is going a lot faster than I expected. So I think in previous years, this has gone this smoothly. So with the Redwood Coast Energy Authority, we have Councilmember Schaefer that had it as one of her higher priorities. And we don't have anyone that might be a candidate for an alternate, but would you be interested in taking this on as a primary?
Yes, I am happy to do that. Looking forward to it. So thank you.
Great. And then in terms of an alternate, do we have anyone on the council that would be interested in serving as an alternate?
I'm happy to do it.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Watson. Okay, last but not least, we have Redwood Region Economic Development Commission. We had a few of you that had it as a top choice, although we, let's see, in terms of the JPAs, I think Councilmember Watson. I think we don't have you as a primary yet for any of those, but I'll leave it up to the council, to those of you that had it as a first choice, what your, what your preferences are.
No, I'm open. You know, I can be flexible on it. This is something I've stirred on the last two years. I'm pretty invested in it. I also serve on two additional committees, on their executive committee and their loan committee. They often have trouble getting to those, for those meetings, so they usually rely on my attendance to those extra committee meetings as well. So, I mean, you know, I would be happy to be the primary on it, but if somebody else felt strongly about it, I'd, you know, be happy to talk about that.
I'm fine turning that over to Councilmember Watson, especially because I know the Energy Authority is going to probably be a fairly time-consuming one as well. So I'm happy to let Watson take the reins on that one.
I'm totally okay with that, too.
Wonderful. So does do either of you have, since you had it as a top choice, either of you interested in being an alternate for that?
I would be interested in being an alternate.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, okay, perfect. Okay, but it'd be helpful, we just went through what we have for this one, and then we'll move on to the next, like just make sure we're all working with the same information.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. It's a long list. Okay, so for Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District Water Quality Task Force, so we have for the primary, myself, and as the alternate, Vice Mayor Watson. For Humboldt County Association of Governments, I have for the primary, Councilmember Atkins Salazar, and the alternate, Councilmember Goldstein. And please, Karen, if I get this wrong, chime in. Humboldt Del Norte Hazardous Materials Response JPA, primary Vice Mayor Watson, alternate myself. We need to go back to Humboldt Transit Authority now that we've solidified the other ones. Let's see. Um, I think in terms of JPAs, the ones that are in red, I think Councilmember Goldstein, we don't have you as a primary yet. That's how I'm reading it, Karen. Would you be open, interested to serving as the primary for Humboldt Transit Authority?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and then?
I would be happy to serve as the alternate for HTA.
Okay.
Yeah. Because that was on my list, but yeah, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, so we'll continue through the list. We have Humboldt Waste Management Authority. I will be the primary and the alternate will be Councilmember Schaefer. Humboldt County Indian Gaming Local Community Benefit Committee, Vice Mayor Watson will serve as the primary. And the alternate would be Atkins Salazar. Let's see, Link of California Cities, Redwood Empire Division, we have Councilmember Goldstein as the primary. We have Councilmember Atkins Salazar as the alternate. Redwood Coast Energy Authority, we have Councilmember Schaefer as the primary, and we have Vice Mayor Watson as the alternate. And we have for Redwood Region Economic Development Commission, we have Vice Mayor Watson as the primary. And we have as the alternate, Councilmember Goldstein. Okay. Hey, we got three of them. Like, that's, that's a big one. And thank you all for really stepping up to serve on such important committees and agencies. So next, we have liaison appointments. So these are, you know, with various nonprofits and community organizations that we have council representation on. So we have the Arcata Kamauapa Sister City Committee. We have as a second choice, Councilmember Schaefer, and as a third choice, Councilmember Atkins Salazar. So that could serve as a primary and an alternate, unless you'd like to see how the other ones fall in line.
I'm, I'm fine. I guess I should speak up for one of the, my second choice was the Arcata House Partnership. But I'm, I realize that I can't meet Monday evenings, so I'm going to have to remove that one.
Okay.
But I'm fine. I'm happy to be, I'm happy to be the lead on the Kamauapa Sister City Committee if, if that works.
I mean, I'm interested to see how the other ones shake out, but I am also interested in being the lead on that as well, because I did put it higher on my priority list.
Okay. Would we like to go through some of the other ones and return back to that? Is that the pleasure of the council?
Yeah, it looks like Stacy and I have a few that align on the same one, so maybe we can work that out, but.
Sure, sure. No, I mean, we don't have to go in a linear fashion if there's other ones we need to talk through, definitely. So next one, Arcade Chamber of Commerce. We didn't have anyone that was able to to commit to that. Perhaps it's the meeting time. I know, I know that's a reason I can't make it myself. But is there any member of the council that would reconsider that, or we can table that for another time?
I will also add that I know, I think for most of you, when I talked with you, that the time constraint was a challenge for you here. We do right now have the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Collaborative. And Vice Mayor Watson is currently serving on that, and so was previous Vice Mayor Patino. And so we can have two people on that. And we do have a representative from the chamber, from Main Street, and from the university that serve on that. So at least it is a connection point right now. There's no necessarily a sunset date on that group, and I suspect that they will be operating for most of the year. So at least we do still have a connection if we can't fill the space. Can we come back to this one after we've gone through others?
Absolutely. Okay. Great. Next, we have the Arcata Downtown Business Community, Arcata Main Street. We have both councilmembers Atkins Salazar and Schaefer that have had it as a top choice, and Vice Mayor Watson as a third choice. So I will open it up to see what you all would like for that one.
So one of the reasons that I picked it is because I, as a business owner, I'm a member of Main Street. But I know it's too, I think this is for, is it for a board position, or?
I don't think it's a board position. I think it's purely a liaison.
Okay, so that's why I put it as one, because I already attend a lot of the meetings, but that also gives me information. So, I mean, I'm open to, you know, Sarah, you could decide what you wanted between Main Street and Kamauapa, and I will take the other.
Um, yeah, I think then in the case that, yeah, if you're already attending those meetings, I was just interested in it because I live a block away from the plaza and, you know, I'm at these businesses all the time in this area, but I am interested in serving on the Sister City Committee. So I would be happy to be the primary on that and then let you take Main Street.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and would you both be interested in serving as alternates for the other ones, or?
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for talking that through. Okay, and now let's go to Arcata House Partnership. So after Councilmember Atkins Salazar's comments about the time conflict, that leaves Councilmembers Goldstein and Schaefer having it equally as a three level of interest. Go ahead, Councilmember Goldstein. Did you have something to say?
Just looking a little bit farther down the list, the Homelessness and Housing Work Group, which I think falls into a similar area, I put as my number-one choice. Oh, that Vice Mayor Watson did as well, but.
There's also, just real quick, Emily, there's two spots on that, so we could both. On that one.
Yeah. Um, so I just was going to put that out there in terms of if Councilmember Schaefer wanted to do Arcata House Partnership, or just putting more information out there, I guess, just saying that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm open to that. And just also the seeing if, because I guess you put Equity Arcata as yours too, so you'll be probably serving primary on more than one. So yeah, I'm happy to serve with House Partnership. That sounds great. Just trying to make sure that the time doesn't conflict with any of the other ones, but I think it looks okay.
And I'm happy to be the alternate.
Wonderful. Great, well, thank you. Next, we have the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Collaborative. We have Vice Mayor Watson. And so it looks like you have it as a second level of interest. So I hope you'll be interested in being a primary on that.
Yeah, and there's also, this is also another one where there's two council spots on it.
Okay, okay.
There's room for one more council member if they care to.
I would, I think that that would coincide nicely with being part of the Downtown Business Community one as well, so I would like to have a seat on that if no one objects.
Okay, any other comments? That looks good to folks. I see some nodding. Perfect. Okay, well, thank you. And next, we have Equity Arcata Advisory Team. And we have Councilmember Goldstein that has expressed a strong interest in this. Should we put you down as a primary?
Yeah, I'd love to be the primary.
Okay, and then is there anyone that's interested in being an alternate that looks like they're still establishing the meeting time? So if you are interested but are not sure about the the timing, if you're interested, it sounds like they probably could incorporate your schedule in terms of making it work, if that's a potential barrier for someone.
I would be happy to be, excuse me, to be an alternate on that.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Let's see, and then we have two spots for the Homeless and Housing Working Group. And so we have, let's see, Councilmember Atkins Salazar that has it as a second choice, and Councilmember Goldstein and Vice Mayor Watson having it as a top choice as well. There's, there's two spots for this. What's the pleasure of the group?
I would really love to be part of this group, if that's something that's okay with the rest of the group, but this is something I feel really passionate about.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to continue serving on the group.
Great, okay, so we have Councilmember Goldstein and we have Vice Mayor Watson. Okay. And so we'll go through this list. But it looks like we'll kind of hold on Arcata Chamber of Commerce, given that that's being covered already through the Economic Recovery Collaborative. Okay, so let's see, so if we have for Arcata Kamauapa Sister City Committee, we have the primary, Councilmember Schaefer, and then the alternate is Councilmember Atkins Salazar. We have for Arcata Main Street, primary, Councilmember Atkins Salazar, and the alternate, Councilmember Schaefer. We have for Arcata House Partnership, primary, Councilmember Schaefer, and alternate, Councilmember Goldstein. For the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Collaborative, we have Vice Mayor Watson and Councilmember Atkins Salazar serving in those two positions. For Equity Arcata Advisory Team, we have as the primary, Councilmember Goldstein, and as the alternate, Atkins, Councilmember Atkins Salazar. And then Homeless and Housing Working Group, we have Councilmember Goldstein and Vice Mayor Watson serving in those two positions. And then the HSU City Liaison Committee is assigned to the mayor. Okay. Any questions? Okay. Great. Go ahead.
Mayor, yeah, I just wanted to just quickly, just for the benefit of the new councilmembers. And as a refresher, this time last year, when I was exiting my role as mayor and the new mayor was coming in, I had spent a lot of time working with HSU and the town and county relationship and just trying to do things that were beneficial to the city and HSU, and the council at the time agreed to allow me to as well attend the HSU City Liaison Meeting. So right now, I do attend those regularly in addition.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Watson. I think that actually brings up a great point. I, one thing I'd been thinking about this is that it might be a good practice in general to have both the mayor and vice mayor you know, participate in this meeting or have the vice mayor serve as the alternate. So that way, through our rotation system, when the vice mayor becomes the mayor, they've already been in the loop of what's been happening in the previous year. So I think your participation as vice mayor makes a lot of sense. But I think, yeah, if there's ever something that's on the agenda that a councilmember is really interested in, I think we can approach that on a case-by-case basis. Okay, great. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to approve our appointments.
I moved to I moved to approve the appointments.
Do we have a second?
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will call the vote by roll call. Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations again to our newly sworn-in council members. Looking forward to working with you all, and I believe we are now adjourned. So take care, everyone.
Great job, everyone.